So, we've already done the pledge of allegiance. This is the committee of the whole. Roll call, gotta do that again.
Mrs. Albright? I think I have to say that. All right, Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Right, Mrs. Jerick?
Here.
Mrs. Leoni?
Here.
Mrs. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Rittenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mrs. Struble?
Yes.
And Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Okay, eight present.
All right. I think everybody heard my public participation thing. I'm not gonna read it again. Agenda edits for committee of the whole, we have none. There'll be an executive session following this meeting to discuss personnel and negotiations. And we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the opportunity to attend the middle school show, the high school musical junior, last Thursday, and it was great to see a show that displayed to many towns of our students under the direction of the town and supported staff and our community presence as well. That was the first show since 2019, so it was good to see the kids up on stage. Congratulations to our first state wrestling champion in the history of Daniel Boone wrestling, Tucker Hogan, and teammate Dean Howser for his fifth-place finish this past weekend at the state wrestling championships. I'll date myself a little bit, but I can remember the last time one of our wrestlers made the state finals of a wrestling tournament was back in 1982, and I was a freshman at this high school, so it was quite a long time ago. Also, best of luck to our swimmers and bowlers who will be participating in states this weekend, and to our middle school cheerleaders in their upcoming national competition this week. I'm sorry, international competition. I'm looking forward to the 50th anniversary for our 50th annual Daniel Boone Jazz Fest being held this Friday in the high school auditorium. And we're approaching the home stretch of the 22-23 school year. Our student section over there is clapping, shaking their head, with the third trimester starting just a little over a week ago, and our fourth quarter beginning in a couple weeks here, so we're in a home stretch, so that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. We have a student board representative report.
Academically, for the AIC, students are taking admitting practice tests in preparation for BSSAs, extracurricular. AIC is hosting an after-school math program, which we need help. Unfortunately, students were very excited to see the school at our school. For the APC, academically, we're part of an out shortly for the second trimester extracurricular. Each class participated in video for some of the fall school. Culturally, the kids came to see the school at our school as well.
For the high school, academically, third quarter is ending, so students are preparing for their quarterly projects. Extracurricular, Dr. Cooper actually stole what I was gonna say. That Tucker Hogan won states for wrestling, and where sports officially wrap up this weekend. And culturally, student government has just hosted their winter formal.
For the middle school, academic, students are preparing for the guest base coming up next month. Extracurricular, spring sports just started, and cultural, middle schools have the day next week.
Thank you all. We were not able to get the copy of the student board report before the meeting, so it's not currently on the agenda, but it will be added to the minutes when they're through. Public comment before we move on to finance? Moving on to finance?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Oh, and Bachi got eighth, right?
Yeah, regionals.
Yeah. Unified Bachi got eighth in regionals, yeah?
Yeah.
One of the kids that's leaving was on the team. So, all right, so anything to discuss under finance? Comments, questions, concerns from the board? Comments, questions, concerns from the audience? All right, moving on to programs. Graduation date, June 2nd. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board? Any public comment? Retirements, leaves, and appointments under personnel. Got a couple of leaves, a couple of appointments. Anything to discuss? Any public comment? Presentation by board members. Mr. Scott? We did hear from a former board member about... We heard...
We invited him to come here also.
Correct. We heard from a former board member who wanted to talk about taxes.
So, we invited him, and we also invited the second person, so...
Correct.
So, we're...
We invited him to come to the meetings. All right. Intermediate, Unit PCIU, Mr. Jerick?
No updates from the last meeting, Julia, and the next meeting, I believe, is Thursday night.
Right, okay, thank you. VCTC?
Sorry, looking for my notes. We met on February 22nd. They went over the budget audit, that was good. The VCTC Foundation, their open house that they had postponed is now, well, was, March 8th at 5:00 p.m., and their budget for 23-24 school year was approved for $18,779,660. And the next meeting is March 26th.
Okay. Any questions from Mrs. Thompson from the board? Cola, Mr. Struble, anything?
It was a very interesting meeting. The lady that was speaking spoke so quickly, and the amount of information she provided in a short amount of time was more than anything I ever could possibly absorb.
Wow. Hard to absorb, huh?
But probably the busiest person I've ever met in my life. Very interesting. The basis of it was really going over priorities this year, grant funding, they have an advocacy program, campaigns, and they reviewed. And inside of just advocacy campaigns, they can make the entire meeting, so there's just a lot going on. You know, the budget hearings, we talked about that, state delegation and legislation committees that they discussed, state mandates and how they're growing again. A lot of people don't realize, we get into some of the charter schools versus public schools, the amount of mandates that are just millions of dollars that are on the back of the public school. Sounds good, well, just give everybody a choice, and that's great, but public school don't have a choice. If the level playing field was level, it might be a little different, but the mandates are just truce, safely. So, we discussed a lot of that, and then they also talked about charter school funding again. That's a hot topic overall. Excuse me?
All right. Any questions? Any questions for Mrs. Struble from the board? Did the tax board meet yet? Do they meet in March or no? Okay. All right. Oh, then they won't meet again until April, if that makes sense. Okay. That's the only other... No other... Do we have any other board reports? Any public comments? Enrollment listed? Any questions for the administration from the board? Public comment? Curriculum instruction committee. That's Mrs. Albright, but she's not here, so would you do one, I? Okay, it was just a reintroduction to that. Our next curriculum instruction meeting is March 27th. Public comment on curriculum instruction? Extracurricular, Ms. Bell?
We met earlier this evening. We've gone over everything a few times now, but there's some things that we didn't cover. We have three going to states for swimming. We have one, Eddie Miller, going to states for bowling individually, and we have a team of boys going to states for bowling as well. And spring sports have kicked off. We have Friday, we have a home game for boys lacrosse, and boys baseball, high school baseball is also away at Penn State this Friday.
I have an off spot in my heart for bowling because my son does bowling, but several years ago, we had a team that went to nationals in Vegas, so I know that our teams have been really good the last couple of years, and I'm glad we're sending somebody to states, and that our students are, as a team, are competing at states as well. That's pretty cool. All right, next meeting is sometime in the future, April 3rd. Any public comment on extracurricular? Facilities?
Yes, we had our meeting this evening as well. There's a quote right now going out to discuss engineering quotes for the separate, the subdivide property of Weaver Town Road in case we decide to sell the building in the front. IC sewer pump installation update, second week of May will be installation. We did approve train units for two of the middle school units were bad, and they're going to install last week of May. There was an RFP for studio, and we just need to get a little bit more detail, some more details on the bids that were part of the proposal that were provided. The intermediate center gym and cafeteria ceiling tile replacement project, there was two bids, and we're gonna get in, push forward the competitor. They didn't give me the name of the company, but...
Correct.
It was $70,000.
For the ceiling, and they're still gotta get more bids for the floor.
And the intermediate center gym floor, we have one bid, and it's still hanging up. We were gonna push out the ceiling portion for voting next time.
Correct.
So, that was $70,000 all in, and it was a company that didn't want to be, the ceiling cost was destroyed. High school courtyard gate, it's broken again, it's going to be repaired, they're gonna look at different options, maybe make it a little bit stronger. And maybe the price to hang some Daniel Boone flags that we have, they're vertical flags along the stadium with the caveat that they'd be taken down in between so they don't destroy it.
In the weather.
Yeah, in the weather. And the next meeting?
Yeah, just as a Cliff Notes version for folks that haven't followed what we're talking about with the old primary center building, which currently has River Rock, and other folks are over there, Berks Encore and all that stuff. So, that piece of property where that school is, or the school, it's no longer a school for us, that building and the IC are kind of on the same, in the same spot, and according to the documentation that Amity Township has, they are a single unit. So, if we wanted to sell, we can't sell one piece of it because they are listed as, they are zoned as a contiguous piece of property. So, what we're doing right now is contracting with an engineering firm, which would be the first step to presenting a proposal to the zoning office in Amity Township to possibly split the two pieces of property so that we can consider getting an assessment for a single property that is not, does not house Daniel Boone Elementary students right now to think about selling it. So, we have to go through all these other processes first before we can even look at getting an assessment of what the building is worth.
The purpose for selling it is because the expenses are exceeding the income provided by the buildings, which is unneeded, so we're spending money on a building that's not being a substantial amount as well, so...
Right.
And our enrollment continues to decline.
Correct. All right. So, I just wanted to put that out there because, you know, you and I have been following it every week, so... Any questions for Mr. Struble on facilities? Any public comment? Finance, that's me. So, we met... We met February 27th, and at that meeting, we discussed two things. We're gonna be taking some of the expense reporting and statement functions, we're gonna be moving it to ISOL, it's currently in Skyward, and that program is a little bit, it's easier to use, it's easier to put information into it, and so that is something that we're gonna be doing. The other thing that we discussed, the primary center, which used to be called Monocacy Elementary Center, a long time ago, we had an issue where the sidewalks there were not considered up to snuff by some state regulator, as a state regulator, right? And so, we are, it's been years in the making that we are finally getting to the end of that process of settling that issue from many, many years ago. That's why it's still listed as being Monocacy Elementary Center for the documentation and not the PC. And that, settling that will be, it won't exceed $4,000. On the 7th, we had budget workshop, and I was very disappointed that only the board members and staff members came, nobody else came to listen to us thrown on for two and a half hours about like every penny that we spend in every building and on everything at the school. I was very disappointed not to see anybody else here. But we went over the budgets for all the buildings, facilities, safety, transportation, special ed. We did not do exhaustive look at curriculum and instruction because it's getting late, and we did not look at our debt service again because it was getting late. We can't do a lot about what those debt service numbers are anyway, and we've done a lot in the last couple of years to bring those numbers down, not only bring them down, but also to spread out our debt service so we're spending similar amounts for debt service every year so we can budget better. So, that was fun. Oh, yeah, we did not set up a date for the next budget meeting because I wanted to talk to all y'all. So, we were looking at mid-April, or is that correct, Ms. Haynes? Oh, can we do...
Or our May 1st or 4th, unless...
Yeah, I would like to do it for after, I would like to do it for after Christian starts, that makes sense.
But for the 1st or the 4th?
How would the 4th be? Oh, Thursdays are bad for you, right?
May 4th?
May, how would the 1st be? May 1st. May 1st. So, then that's after our new business manager will have started, so he'll be able to be there for it.
Maybe over now to the...
Can we not do a Tuesday? We, I would, you said 1st, is there something wrong with 2nd?
Oh, I said the 1st through the 4th.
Okay, I would prefer to do the 2nd, is that okay? Is the 2nd all right? Do 6:30? Okay. We'll set it for 6:30 on the 2nd. Okay. And thus, ended my report. Our next meeting is, I don't know when it is, it's next week. It's two weeks from now, 27th. All right. Any questions for me, because obviously I'm so well versed in what's going on? Any public comment? Policy review, that meeting was canceled?
The meeting was canceled.
Okay, so we'll have that next meeting, April 3rd?
Yep.
All right. Any public comment on policy review? Technology, Mr. Struble?
It was a record meeting in terms of time.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Equipment replacement update, K through 8 iPads have been ordered. Anticipating swapping devices shortly after spring break. By swapping devices prior to the end of the school year, it will eliminate the disruptions previously experienced over the summer when they collected device discrepancies. This summer, all the students will have their devices for summer academic programs, programming in which they participate. They continue to evaluate various interactive whiteboard vendors. They participated in five total in-person demos, as well as provided three different opportunities for faculty members to engage, the most recent being on March 13th, the in-service day. And they'll now be working to determine the best fit for the district and developing recommendations. There's no recommendation at this point.
Okay.
Work continues on the new website. While training for the website has been completed by APTG, I'm sorry, APTG is in the process of migrating content now. They'll receive training on learning functionality, alternating functionality for the website in March, and they're scheduled for a June release date for the website, and most likely shortly right after the year is completed. That's it?
All right. Any questions for Mr. Struble?
So, all K3s is keeping iPads over summer. This is new, right?
K3?
K3s is all keeping iPads through the whole summer.
They can?
This is new, correct? Like, they didn't do that?
This is new, yep. Now, that's what we have down here, whether they take them all or they don't, I mean, that's for the ones that need them, I think, for the most part.
So, I feel like my kids were issued like a new iPad every year, like...
Do whatever you...
Will they keep the same iPad all the way up?
If they wanna take it home, yeah, they can.
If they wanna take it home all the summer, they can, yeah.
For every, you know, all of them?
It's a four-year lease, so... They've been able to get out, the best part is we've been able to get new technology and keep the best technology for our kids for, actually, been savings each year so far, so it's been good.
So, they won't have to spend the beginning of the school year reissuing?
Correct, yeah. Now, yeah, and there is always a concern that that could be, you know, a horrendous disaster with young children. So, you know, we reserve the right to change our minds after we try it the first year? Any questions for Mr. Struble on technology beyond what Ms. Thompson asked? Any public comments? Old business? Oh, I apologize, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, how many tablets are we getting?
Oh, I don't know the exact count.
And how much is it costing us?
I think the lease is less than it was last year. We don't actually pay for it, we lease them, so there's no cash out like for the total amount. Let me see what I have here. Just don't have that in, I don't wanna give you the...
That's okay, I just wanted to know. We'll have that answer for you in a couple of days.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's not a problem. I'm asking because I don't know.
No, it's okay.
So, the other thing with the tech, Google Classroom is what we use now, correct? It's free for the kids?
I think there's only one grade that's using.
There's only one grade that's using?
Fourth grade, we only want a two grade.
That's using Google Classroom, it's only 4th grade?
Yeah, they're phasing that out, yeah.
Okay, because it's free, and what do we get to replace that?
We use Google.
The other... Trying to figure out.
In the elementary.
Schoology?
At the elementary level, yeah.
At the elementary level. We've changed it so many times, it's like... I was thinking something costing $250,000 through 2027, and I'm not exactly sure. It's a guessing game for me because this isn't my expertise.
No, I understand.
I am trying to figure out the number one.
We do tape the things, but just get your name, that's all I need.
Yeah, Michelle.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on technology? Moving on to old business, approval of minutes, any problems with that from the board? Any public comment? New business. So, the Berks County Tax Committee has asked us to present an alternate delegate, yeah, it's you. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. They only need four times a year, so you would only need, you only need to show up like when the other person can't be there. And it's only until the end of this year, and then we'll pick new people. Okay. There's only three more meetings this whole year, so hopefully you don't get called for alterism. So, yeah, we were notified by the director of the tax authority that we needed to get an alternate because we didn't have one on the books, and it has to be voted on. I can't just assign somebody. If you have horrendous issues with it, you can...
No, it's fine.
All right. Any public comment on new business? Presentation by the public on any issues? Oh, we did get an email from Mr. Beckelman as well, but I knew that you were gonna be giving your presentation as well, so I didn't mention it, but we got it. Yeah. I didn't mean to leave you out.
No, no.
Nice picture, brother.
Picture of you on there?
Yeah.
Sure, the picture in your email.
Yeah, the image shows up.
It's a bad one, then, I guess.
That's true. Good evening, everyone. I should have emailed everyone. It's more about, I'm talking about the E and I, more or less was posted on date booked. There are 10 federal holidays. Seven holidays were posted. Why wasn't Christmas posted? Thanksgiving or President's Day? I had Christmas 2022, I'm going back since the beginning of the school year, I can go back farther. Christmas 2022, Thanksgiving 2022, President's 2022. I'm personally offended that Christmas wasn't supposed to be in the Christian name. Did you know that the last time Christmas or Thanksgiving was posted or acknowledged, I'll call it, was on 2019? Now, I'm sure why this was intentional, however, all this changed since 2019. There are many observance dates acknowledged by the state, some are even local observances. In the US calendar, there are 16 observed holidays. Why wasn't citizenship acknowledged and not Constitution Day? As both are observed holidays, why was indigenous people Day acknowledged? I'm sorry. Why was citizenship Day acknowledged and not Constitution Day? As both are observed holidays, why was indigenous people Day acknowledged and not Columbus Day? Both days are the observed days. Why wasn't Chinese Year, New Year's acknowledged, and either Groundhog Day? We have a substantial amount of people in our community who are Jewish, and none of the Jewish holidays were acknowledged nor observed. This isn't very inclusive. The inclusivity here in Dune is partial and not equitable as it favors one political/religious ideology and not any other. We kick off for the first day of hunting, yet we do not acknowledge Passover or Good Friday. If we are going to post Valentine's Day, Halloween, Mother's Day, Father's Day, we should acknowledge Easter. There are 11 heritage days, which can be multiplied each month. They include two History Months, two Pride Months, and 14 of our heritage. Why are we acknowledging only three of our heritage? This is not very diverse nor inclusive. We are acknowledging pride over multiple heritage. Daniel Boone should be proud of everything that makes up our community, not pick and choose what we choose to highlight and what makes our community diverse and thrive. I also emailed two links to the board. They were the Women's, International Women's Day. So, I emailed for two DVD posts in place of women's, so, let me see, I'm sorry. Instead of posting Women's History Month on Daniel Boone's Facebook page, chose to post International Women's Day, which is celebrated on March 17th. Instead of posting Women's History Month on Daniel Boone's Facebook page, chose to post International Women's Day, which is celebrated on March. Now, it was posted on March, however, Women's History Month was not posted. These two observed warranted two separate posts. The link Daniel Boone chose to post was a gender equality link under International Women's Day, as opposed to the link that explains what it means. I sent both links. I'm almost done. This is the first I've heard of this holiday, and what Daniel Boone shared had me interpret that biological women are now no longer observed, but only under the lens of gender equality. Did you know that there is an International Men's Day, which is observed in November of 19? Daniel Boone did not acknowledge that. Is there an attack on what defines what woman is? It appears so, because it clearly doesn't matter how men are defined. Do you see my frustration? Do you see the propaganda that Boone is sending out to our community blindly? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sally Berry, Township Township. I'm here to comment on the incident that happened at the intermediate center on March 2nd. Not only was it a horrible way that parents were treated, but why would students' personal items not be able to be found and handed over to the parents? There's no reason they should have either had to go to the school to pick up those items. An administrator should have delivered them to their homes several weeks after the incident, along with sincere condolences and an offer to provide therapy for the entire family. This should have been a directive from Dr. Cooper as the leader of the school district, as I have been reminded over and over again. Again, let me explain how the board works and the hierarchy. You, the board, oversee the superintendent and CFO. They work for the board. All we see is how this all played out over the past year especially. After I received several contacts at other Berks County school districts, it is appalling how this family has been treated. Never would that hideous behavior happen anywhere else. It would make me ask, what is being covered up, especially since the district felt the need to lock down the school and call the Amity Police? When there was absolutely no threat to the students inside the building? Learning together and advocating for all has been jammed down our throats ever since Dr. Cooper arrived. My question, who this administration really advocates for? Certainly not the students, parents, or taxpayers. Where's the compassion, decency, and overall humanity in this district? Because I am definitely not seeing it being exhibited by anyone sitting in front of me or to the side of me. Come on, Daniel Boone, do better.
Thank you.
I'm here pretty much for the same reason.
Okay, Janine?
Yes, Margie. And I just want to say that Roman Young's life mattered. It shouldn't matter how his flame burnt out. He was a member of this district, he was a member of our community. He had family, friends, teachers, classmates that all loved him. My son was especially close to him. And still cries over the loss of his friend. The way that this tragedy has been handled has been disgraceful. Did the principal reach out to the family to provide condolences? Did the superintendent? Did the district? Did they welcome them into the school and sit down with them and talk with his teachers or his counselor? Did they provide them with his belongings? Was anything at all done to comfort this grieving family? They've been made out to appear unhinged. The other week, when they stopped at the school to retrieve Roman's belongings, which, by the way, should have been coactively returned quite some time ago. The video clearly shows that they rung the bell, they announced who they were, they specifically said why they were there, and then they waited. And you know what happened? The cops arrived. Simply for showing up for Roman's thanks. The district sends out an announcement that a member of the community misrepresented themselves to get into the building and a shelter in place was ordered. I don't understand that at all. That makes no sense to me. Would this have happened if we lost Roman to a car accident or some type of a physical illness? Children are struggling, and they continue to struggle. And that does not mean that their life is less valuable. The community also lost another beautiful student several years ago. He received a memorial, a picture in the vestibule in the hall at the school, a memorial dedication bench. What is the district done to honor Roman's memory? There's no picture of him in the vestibule, there's no special memorials, there's no benches. The bench is particularly important, as that would be a physical item and a place for his friends and classmates to go in remembrance of him. They were expecting this to happen. They were under the impression that they were getting that this bench was going to be available. A bench did show up, but it was, it was a replacement of the bench for the other child. It was for Maverick, and he absolutely deserved another bench because his bench was broken. But it doesn't negate that there should be something honoring this child. Roman's friends are struggling. His family is struggling, and this district needs to do better. Thank you.
Michelle T. One, Township.
What I'm going to ask is questions, I don't have the answers, so if you guys ask me, I don't know. That's why I'm asking you, just to tell you that, to start with. I want to know, are we charging for the buses to be parked on school properties? If we are, how much are we charging? And if we are not, why are we not charging? Is there still plans to put buses over the 55 community or Online Pond Road? I'm not sure exactly where. I understood that Amity Township was approached, they asked us to go through the procedure, and then we sent a letter and said, never mind, we're not coming. So, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, because nothing's transparent, I do not know. I've not spoken to any of these people that have talked about this childhood that's passed away. It was a conversation among me and my family, and I have a lot of the same questions, because I have a nine-year-old nephew who goes to that school. So, I said, why was, I don't know what it's called, Amity Elementary Primary Center, I'm not sure if the school's the current name. But why was it locked down approximately two weeks ago? Was it because the parents of a student who passed away had neglected his belongings? And then I was told he had one thing left there, and that was it, that his belongings had already been retrieved. I do not know if that's true. But we need answers. We don't know, because nobody's telling us, so it's a guessing game. Somebody says one thing, and then, you know, asks another question. Anyway, I'm getting off here, but, so, why were the cops called immediately? Did anyone from the administration try to defuse the situation or offer their help to the local police that ran out there? The cops are probably in the middle of this, thinking, what am I doing? Because from the top on down is where something should be solved. So, why were the cops called immediately? Did anyone from the administration try to defuse the situation or offer their help to the local police or the grieving family? Have steps, programs, or other things been done to teach children about bullying? I don't know if that's what happened, but I'm just, it's still a good thing to have in the school. Do we still have a program in place that we did a few years ago that teaches children about bullying? I think it was called Always Bully Prevention Program. I could be wrong again, but there was something. Because I asked my son if he had done it, and they had taught things. Have mental health counselors been available to the children who are very, very young to have suffered such a tragedy? Did we see counselors from professionals who have dealt with this before? The police have been sitting at the elementary center, I heard from my niece, every day since this lockdown. She's nervous, because she doesn't know what's going on. If, the lockdown was said it was nothing to worry about, so if it was nothing to worry about, why are the police sitting there every day? Is there something to worry about? What approach are we taking? The community needs more communication effects. Do administrators, superintendent not have cameras where they can see what is going on? Did anybody, the superintendent, anybody on the upper administration go over there that day to talk to the cops, to talk to the parents? Thank you.
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Now, I seem lucky to be able to respond to my questions. And then I wanted to, you guys, to go down.
Thank you. Melissa, what is her?
Last four meetings, February 27th, I gave pictures out about a body bench from Roman Young. It was approved by PT C, the vendor, and his family. I asked why this bench has not been put in. My question was not answered online. My daughter missed dance and was told not till spring because of the weather. This past Friday, a bench identical to Roman's, except with a different saying, was put up for Maverick. He deserves it. Once again, I want to know, I want an answer to my question this time. Because, Julia, you are very good at saying it's a misunderstanding or a mistake, a lot more, I guess, than you realize. I would really like this answered, for me, for my daughter, for other kids in this community that go to that school. This bench was a celebration of his life for many kids that miss him every single day. This has nothing to do with anything other than Roman's years here at TV from kindergarten to the fourth grade. This bench does not, it's not about the why, the what, or when, it's about how much he was loved by other students. In talking about the bench, I heard that fourth graders, since this new bench was put in, are calling it the gay bench. Any student that sits on it will be called gay, because it's rainbow colored. On this note, bullying is out of control in our district. We need to do something different, because the way it's being held, the way everybody's, oh, sorry. The way it's being dealt with now is not good at all. Oh, I want to know what the protocol is if a child goes in to see a counselor upset. And I want to know this personally, because my daughter went to go, went in to see her counselor, was crying. I had no idea until about maybe a month later, when she talked to me and telling me she does not want to go to school because she has an issue with a teacher. A teacher was making comments to her, sarcastic comments in front of the whole class. She went to her counselor crying. I then finally called, after she told me about this, called, emailed the principal and her counselor. Counselor says, oh, now I know why she was in my office crying. I said, why didn't I know she was in your office crying? Why aren't parents being notified of this? That's a big, and the way it was handled was awful, because the math teacher was told, do not speak to her, have her sit down, do not contact the mother. Have no conversation with her. That's how we deal with the problem? That's ridiculous, it's disgusting. We need to do a lot better than that.
Thank you.
Shane Cockle, E30, County Council. My concern is basically the way we came up with the program that's behind you. I'm not questioning the people who thought this was the best program, but I feel for Mr. Rittenhouse, who had a concern. And instead of having more than one option, you guys are forcing each other to vote. If that, if you had enough people, and that motion failed, what was your going to be your backup? I mean, you can't just present one item all the time. Just like when I brought up concerns about the TIF program. When I, I went home after the meeting, and within two hours, I found all kinds of problems. And I brought it back to the school board, and none of you had any idea what I was pointing out. A couple did. The lawyer had understood, but that communication wasn't brought to the rest of the board. I don't know if I would have brought it up if you guys would have ever found out and would have went through and passed. I have faith, you know, I'm just saying, me as a person. A person in the public who brings up a problem, and it falls short on everyone's ears that we didn't know this was a potential problem. Our school district, along with all school districts across the United States, make very costly mistakes. And you always wonder how these mistakes are being made. So, I think there needs to be a little bit more communication. You should have respect for one of your board members who has a problem with the program and say, okay, we'll give you another month or two, let's see if there's another program. Just tonight, there was a yes or no. And the other concerning part was, Mrs. Albrecht brought up in that meeting, because I was there, that the communication was horrible, that she read the complaints. Number one complaint is they don't respond. Mrs. Owens, which I have a lot of respect, I think she does a great job, countered and said, well, whenever she calls, they call right back. And that's because they're called into the salespeople.
They do that, but she said for ELA as well, though.
Yeah.
Which one we currently have.
We, we're not, we're not talking to salespeople for ELA, because that's already in school. So, we are, I mean, we are getting, we are getting good responses from.
Because you don't own the program, yes?
Because we do.
We do own ELA.
This new one is just voted on tonight.
Correct, but we, before we even discussed the possibility of getting that in two years ago, we were already getting good responses, responsiveness.
Next is math, we had ELA with us.
I'm sorry, English Language Arts. English Language Arts is already in the school, and we've always had good responses from the folks with English Language Arts from SADAS as well. I'm just saying.
Okay, did the rest of the board hear that from Mrs. Albrecht about her concerns? Are they communicating?
She, yeah, she did, she brought that up to the group.
Okay.
And Mrs. Owens and Mrs. Tracy Drehouse, she, they said that they found that our particular assistance rep has been very responsive to us.
That's all that was my concern.
Mm-hmm.
If you find you're going to get support. Once we have good.
Okay. Shane?
And I did, I did want to say that, I do want to say that, like, as far as the TIF goes, some of the things that, Shane has some other issues with the TIF program that he brought to our attention, but our, our council was preventing the things that you were most concerned about from happening to the district.
But you guys were unaware of that?
Because there was no contract to look at, because it was still being, it was still being discussed. The people that were on the TIF committee knew, but there was nothing coming out of the committee, because our council was protecting the district, is what we paid him for. And he still is, we still don't have a TIF, we still don't have a contract to look at, to even review, because he's protecting the district from the exposure that you're, some of, at least some of what you brought to me that you were concerned about. He's already, he's protecting us from that.
Shane?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was going to say, it's true, we're friends, but I mean, you really, that was, you did, you helped us out. I mean, you brought some stuff to light, and like she said, we have counsel that's preventing us. We haven't known it yet, there was a lot of concerns, but you brought.
We still haven't.
Right, right, no, I'm just saying, you know, you did, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. I mean. It's a lot of work, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Paul Markle, Berka. Back in February, you brought up how inappropriate material sounded in the school library in Pennsylvania and how the gendered book was allowed in the library because of the American, American Library Association protocol. This week, I would like to discuss how this gets into the schools. Depends being the school librarians association and the 2023 PSLA conference scheduled for March 30th through April 1st. Depends being the school library association, PSLA, professional organization for school library professionals and library educators. According to the website, PLSA's mission is to, is dedicated to transforming teaching and learning through all these school library programs. PLSA is a chapter of the American Association of School Librarians and division of, of the American Library Association, LA, the same L-A-R-A that approved pornographic material for school libraries and schools and puts out. I would like to read some excerpts from the keynote speaker and author from the PSLA website. Keynote speaker says Cicely Lewis. In 2017, she started the ReWoke Challenge to respond to injustices in her community and the lack of diversity in young and old readers. Her students were required to read books that, that challenge social norms and give voice to the silence. Using the platform, she had inspired the nation to rebook with educators across the world, enjoying and sharing and moving with their students. With the ReWoke Challenge, students are encouraged to read in ten categories that meet woke book requirements. A woke book must be: challenge social norms, give voice to the voiceless, provide information about a group that has been disenfranchised, seeking challenge to satisfy, have a protagonist from an under, underrepresented or oppressed group. This nonsense has many of the same verbiage as CRT. And nowhere here is it mentioned to teach kids how to read. That's not part of the requirements. The keynote author is Alex Kino. And I'm going to read from the, what they are saying. They are grateful for the ability to spend their time and energy on something so close to their heart. Alex, as you notice, a single person, but there isn't they and there a lot in the write-up, which is nonsense, had been an activist and advocate for LGBTQIA+ communities since 1997 when they became co-chair of what was then called an LGBA at the University of Pennsylvania. Alex Kino is a gender identity, a transgender activist that wrote several gender identity books geared towards eight to 12-year-olds. See, the mission transforming teaching and learning in the public library is just another way to get inappropriate material in the classroom.
Your, your time is up. We have your, we have your written comments, so thank you.
One last question. If anybody from this school district is going to this conference.
Okay.
Can you turn your sheet in so we can read?
I got it. I got it. You already did. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Can I get a motion to a juror? Can I get a second?
I'll make it.